Let me just go grab it really quick.
Hmm?
The man on a mission. You good? Do you want me to get one?
Of what?
Well, we can do that first.
Oh, my gosh. I thought we were done. I thought the pizza party was starting. Thank you. You and Charlie. You and Charlie.
Six weeks before having so much fun. We need to get a rock and roll, y'all. Say a reporter for what I'm pretending there. Everybody needs to go up here. You still there? I might be in there.
I'm going to step out for that.
Okay.
And just wait outside.
Sure.
Oh, I have a feeling that these crunchies are going to make a lot of noise.
Ready when you are, Mayor.
Okay. Everybody, we're going to call the talent city council regular meeting of November sixth order. Roll call, please.
Councilor Colley.
Here.
Councilor Panemirov.
Here.
Councilor Greider.
Here.
Councilor Pestejo.
Here.
Councilor Byers.
Here.
Councilor Parin Miller.
Here.
And Mayor Ayers Flood.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Hector. Next item on the agenda is additions and corrections to the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, we'll move to number three, which is community announcement staff.
Mayor members of the council, I have several upcoming events. The holiday gift tree. Yeah, got it. The holiday gift tree will go up at City Hall on November 12th. The event helps local families have a memorable holiday season. For more information, contact Colleen Bradley at City Hall. She's been doing this project for about thirty years. So that's a good one to follow up on. Leaf drop off is scheduled for November twenty fourth and December eighth at the Valley View Transfer Station in Ashland. The check the city's website for vacancies on city committees and commissions. There are several. Check that out and see if there's an area where you'd like to serve as a advisor to the city council. The general election was yesterday. Those who received the majority votes for each of their seats are or anti-buyers and seat two, Rosario Medina in seat four and Daniel Colay in seat six. Additional announcements. The as I've advised you, I think by memorandum, there's a new requirement by FEMA for updating the city's flood plane management program. It has an effect on the National Flood Insurance Program and is requiring us to bring the National Flood Insurance Program into compliance with the Endangered Species Act. FEMA notified us to undertake this work in October, I believe, and we had a deadline to basically enact a new ordinance by December first. FEMA did does does not quite comprehend Oregon planning law. And there's been a lot of activity going on amongst cities and the League of Oregon cities and federal legislators about how we're going to be able to comply with this. And there have been a number of meetings between planning directors, planning staff and FEMA staff on 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 how to proceed in good faith with trying to get this accomplished. So one thing that's happening is that the Rogue Valley Council of Governments is hosting a public meeting on this topic, actually four of them. And they are for the public and city staff or counselors if they wish to attend. The first one was today. The next meeting is tomorrow at ten AM. It's a Zoom meeting. You'll need to go to the Rogue Valley Council of Governments website to see the Zoom address for that. There's another meeting on November thirteenth at ten AM and another one on November fourteenth at two PM. The status for us is that our RV cog planner is working with Nick our city planner to try to get as much of this done before December first as we possibly can. We have scheduled a public hearing at the Planning Commission on November twenty sixth and a city council hearing for December fourth. FEMA gave a deadline of December first, but this is the closest we could get to achieve that December first goal. As we had to do public notice, we had to provide thirty five days notice to the state and to FEMA. And we had to do a measure fifty six notice to all residents who were affected and the staff has been working hard to get that that notice out. So more to come. It'll be on the council agenda on December fourth. And we've corresponded with our federal legislative representatives indicating our concerns about the hurry up nature of this process. Other community announcements, this is our first meeting in this room as a city council moving across the hall. The city recorder reports that we should be able to improve audio and video quality by by moving into this room. You may have noticed that the acoustics do seem to be better. And this will be, this is our first meeting to try it out. Our goal is to continue to have the city's public meetings that are in person in this room until the town hall becomes available again. One final announcement is that we have received three proposals for the water meter replacement program. The staff has been reviewing those proposals. We did a ranking of those proposals today, and there are interviews with the proponents scheduled for next week. So we are planning to have on your agenda in December, either the first meeting or the second meeting, or if needed, a special meeting because this needs to get under contract by December thirty first to get this get this project, which is funded by ARPA funding, awarded and ready to go by the first of the year. The work would actually be accomplished during twenty twenty five as the weather permits. That's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any other announcements from the members, council members? All right, hearing done. Item number four is speakers heard on non-adventive item. Are there any speaker request forms?
Request forms nor emails.
Okay, so at this time, we are not accepting any more speaker requests, either online or in person. Item number five point one is department report staff.
Department reports, I would refer you to reports that may have been included in the weekly report. The major department activities include the water meter project, some street improvements and sidewalk repairs, some repairs to storm drain systems, fences and streets that were initially funded by FEMA in twenty nineteen, but which were not accomplished and is now being pursued by the Public Works Director. And I mentioned the floodplain activity previously, which is a very unexpected and heavy lift. Other than that, I don't have any department reports to refer to.
Any questions? Thank you. Moving on to item number six is the consent calendar. Are there any items on the consent calendar that need to come out for discussion? Seeing none, are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion. Council buyers.
I move to approve the consent calendar. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, seven point one is the approval of the skate park rehabilitation grant agreement. Staff report.
Mayor members of the council, we have now received the grant agreement for the skate park rehabilitation project. This project will be funded in part by a grant in the amount of three hundred and fifteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars from the local government grant program of the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department. We are, we need to approve a local government grant agreement and then return that to ORPD to generate a notice to proceed letter or cannot begin until the city receives the notice to proceed. The this project must be completed by December thirty first, twenty twenty six. We're actually planning to do this in the next calendar year. The city is currently accepting proposals on the skate park bowl rehabilitation portion of this project. Proposals are due on November twentieth. We need to have a contract in place for the work no later than December thirty first to remain eligible to use ARPA funding that is also set aside for this project in the amount of two hundred and ten thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars. Time is of the essence. A separate process will be used to bid the portions of the project that involve expanding the picnic areas and constructing the small stage venue. As a part of the RFP that we issued, we would require the contractor to confer with user users of the skate park as they as this is a design build project. So some modifications of the current design may be feasible, but the primary work will be rehabilitation of the facility and it's largely in its current configuration. So we're requesting a motion to authorize the city manager to execute the local government grant program agreement with the Oregon Department of Parks and Recreation for the Old Town Skate Park Rehabilitation. Roger.
Thank you, staff. Are there any questions or comments? Council buyers.
One, congratulations. Thank you for doing this. The skate park has been needing this repair for a long time, and it's so important to the community. Two, I do, I do want to point out just that discussion of a stage area has been brought up a couple of times, but looking at the project description, it's bringing up the original conversation we had with the grant writer. That says canopy structures, picnic tables, fence repairs and landscaping. I believe the intent had been to create a multifunctional space that could serve both for community gathering, sharing meals, like under a structure if or shade or inclement weather, but also as a possibility for when events would like to have music in the park as a good location to place musicians. So I just wanted to point that out because there is a tiny discrepancy in between the language that has been used to describe this project versus what from the grant agreement.
Great. Thank you. My understanding is that the addition of that is what made the grant more viable. That's what I heard. Is that right?
Agreed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was a great presentation by the grant writer that worked on this, and he was really looking at how do we respond to the community's articulated desire for how to proceed with the skate park, which was to repair the surface as opposed to replace the bowl and also make that space even more functional for the community.
The space being the
The overall park.
Overall park, yeah.
Yeah.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Thank you for that, council buyers, and thank you for the parks coming in. Thanks for the parks commission for the role that they played in that. If there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion. Council buyers.
I move to approve, I'm looking for the actual motion, sorry. I got excited. Thank you. I move to authorize the city manager to execute the local government grant program agreement with the Oregon Department of Parks and Recreation for the Old Town Skate Park Rehabilitation Project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize the city manager to execute the local government grant program agreement with the Oregon Department of Parks and Recreation for the Old Town Skate Park Rehabilitation Rehabilitation Project. Is there any further discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, yeah, thank you, Gary, for for bringing your creativity to the table and getting and getting both projects funded. It was a real great stroke of the pen. Next item on the agenda, eight point one, renewal of the city attorney contract. Staff report.
Mayor members of the council, the city entered into a personal services contract with attorney David Lowman in October twenty twenty two, which was subsequently extended to December thirty first, twenty twenty four. Mr. Lowman has has provided a consistent professional and critical service to the city and would like to extend his contract for an additional year. Dave brings over ten years of experience as Ashland's former city attorney. He's well versed in municipal affairs. He has proven to be an asset to the city of talent. Mr. Lowman's hourly rate was initially set at a hundred and fifty dollars an hour and a monthly retainer of seven thousand five hundred dollars in twenty twenty two, and there's been no increase. He's requesting an increase in the retainer to nine thousand a month, which is based upon a hundred and eighty dollar per hour fifty hour per month rate. Very reasonable rate compared to other attorneys providing similar service. So I'm recommending that you authorize the city manager to execute a contract extension with David Lowman for attorney services through December twenty twenty five.
Any questions or comments? Council Panamara.
Yeah, I just want to say I really appreciated having Dave here on the dais with us in the meetings. And I'm really glad he's with the city. I do know it's a twenty percent increase from two years ago, and I'm just wondering that you said it's a very reasonable rate, and it does seem for an attorney.
Yeah.
Reasonable rate. So I just wanted to know why.
The the rate is comparatively very low and the, is it twenty percent?
If I do the math right, from a hundred and fifteen hours to a hundred and eighteen hours, thirty dollars and more. That's yeah, how Panamara can do that stuff right in her head? No. No. It is.
I'm recommending it because it's a lower than a comparable rate for city attorney services provided by any consulting firm.
So I think when we hired David, it was probably a pretty low rate then as well. So, yeah, I can see that. Thank you.
Can I ask, my question was going to be, do we have a comp study?
I did not do an extensive comp study. I just did telephone calls.
Okay, great. So can you note that on, can you make notes of that? Can you provide notes of that to the record?
Sure.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Council Panamara.
I moved to offer as the city manager to execute a contract extension with David Lowman for attorney services through December twenty twenty five.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to authorize city manager to execute a contract extension with David Lowman for attorney services through December of twenty twenty five. There any further discussion? I have one more question, and I should have asked before the margins on the table. So we previously authorized the city manager to 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 really have oversight over the city attorney, who could that have Jordan? Would we effectively buy the extension of a contact with Dave Lowman? Are we effectively doing that again, or should we revisit that? Or do you want to look into that?
Well, the agreement with Dave Lowman previously was approved by the council. So that's why I brought it back to the council.
And then I think we further authorized the city manager to provide oversight. So I guess I don't want to hold this up. But if at some point in time, we can just look into that and figure out if the motion would I'll finish my question when we're done with the motion. All right, so is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So what I was going to say, Gary, is if there's a reason to revisit that, you can look into that, bring that back to the council. I think we did it right around this time of year, a couple of years ago. If not, if it's if it's built into the contract, then there would be no need, but I'm just giving you a heads up about it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is item eight point two, which is to award the contract for Bear Creek Hazardous Mitigation Project. Staff report.
Mayor members of the council, the city obtained grant funding through FEMA for a wildlife mitigation project along Bear Creek. A request for proposals for phase one of this project was issued by RV cog on the city's behalf, and we've received twelve proposals. A three-person scoring team reviewed and scored the proposals and Briarville Fire and Forestry, Inc. of Ashland, received the highest score. The overall project proposes to address wildfire risk concerns along the Bear Creek in Talent. Previous wildfires previous wildfires have left flammable debris and invasive flora is is proposing a is posing a further risk. This project has been endorsed by the Oregon Department of Emergency Management, FEMA, Jackson County and the City of Talent. The proposed project includes site preparation and removal of large hazardous trees and stumps, removal of medium sized trees and stumps and removal of all brush, blackberry bushes or local fauna. Also remove removal of floor level hazardous debris like dead leaves and disposal or dispersal of all wooded debris. The project area consists of two separate sites and runs approximately seventy five acres along the Bear Creek corridor. Activities will be implemented while adhering to local forestry standards, including the use of harvesters. Excuse me, use of harvesters, masticators and chainsaws to clear the project area. Because the project is funded with FEMA funds, there are environmental compliance conditions. Because the project is funded with FEMA funds, there are environmental compliance conditions that must be met. This contract with Briarville Fire and Forestry will address the first phase of a two-phase project. The first phase being the fuel reduction and hazardous tree removal, the second phase being restoration and replanting. The precise scope of work is listed in the staff report. The target date for phase one project completion is within twelve months. Recommendation is to authorize the city manager to execute the contract for Talent Wildlife Mitigation Project Phase One. Two. Seeing my next page.
Right.
Briarville. Briarville Fire and Forestry, Inc.
At a cost not to exceed.
Three hundred eighty seven thousand four hundred twenty one dollars. Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Are there any recusals? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Very good.
Councilor Colay.
I move to authorize the city manager to execute a contract for Talent Wildfire Mitigation Project Phase One to Briarville Fire and Forestry Incorporated at a cost not to exceed three hundred and eighty seven thousand four hundred and twenty one dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize city manager to execute contracts for Talent Wildfire Mitigation Project Phase One. To Briarville Fire and Forestry, Inc. at a cost not to exceed three hundred and eighty seven thousand four hundred twenty one dollars. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight point three, the Public Arts Committee recommendation to adopt our stories through art projects. Staff.
Mayor members of the council, at their October meeting. The Talent Public Art Committee adopted the Our Stories Through Art project as a part of the committee work plan. What this means is that T-PAC would assume responsibility for some of the roles in the project. Such as the call to artists working with city staff and provide entities for relocation for location and feasibility approvals for murals and sculptures. The Talent Business Alliance President attended the meeting to talk to the group about. The project. And T-PAC's potential role in the project. Uh, the. Business Alliance President explained that the city itself has no specific funding source for arts projects. So the OSTA, a consortium of groups, is a way for T-PAC to have more help in securing funding and help to meet the goals of installing public art in the city. Uh, T-PAC reviewed the OSTA project and T-PAC's role would be to create a criteria for artists for public art installations and murals. There's a possibility of hiring a consultant through a talent business alliance to help T-PAC work on creating criteria. T-PAC discussed the different options and processes of acquiring public art, including a call to artists, choosing a submission and awarding a grant to the artist. Or having the community submit art concepts as part of a concept and then hiring muralists to create the criteria. It would be part of T-PAC's role to choose both the criteria and the process for deciding a final design and how to create and install that design. While no specific recommendation was made to the city council, it appears that T-PAC is seeking authorization by the city council. To engage with TBA and others in implementation of the. Our Stories Through Art project by undertaking certain volunteer roles. Note that any retention of services such as contracting with a consultant to assist with arts competition criteria. Would be managed through the city services recruitment practices. Staff would work with T-PAC to secure their advice. Our recommendation is to authorize the Talent Public Art Committee to participate with other community partners. In the implementation of the Our Stories Through Art project.
Are there any recusals? Counselor Perry Miller.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, so as everyone knows in this room, I do work for the Talent Business Alliance as a paid staff member. Um, and I called up my good friend Susan Myers at the Oregon Government Ethics Commission earlier today just to check in with her. Um, and she recommended that, you know, out of an abundance of caution that I. Just declare a potential conflict, so it's not an actual conflict, it's a potential. And she reminded me that once I share that information, I am. Um, able to continue with deliberation and voting, which I intend to do.
Anybody else? Uh, also me, I am an employee of the Talent Business Alliance and for the same, uh, under the same advice. Uh, for an abundance caution, I am declaring a potential conflict of interest, but can say with confidence that, uh, should I deliberate in this, uh, I can do it, uh, in a non-biased way. So is there any? Questions or comments from staff?
No.
All right, hearing none. Uh, I mean, sorry, I'll entertain a motion. Uh, Councilor Penamara.
I move to authorize the Talent Public Art Committee to participate with other community partners in the implementation of the Our Stories Through Art Project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize the Talent Public Art Committee to participate with other community partners in the implementation of the Our Stories Through Art Project. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I do want to note through the record that the other partners are the Talent Historical Society, the Talent Public Arts Committee, Coalition Fortaleza, Talent Maker City, along with the Talent Business Alliance. Uh, next item on the agenda is the Urban Forestry Committee Recommendations for Gateway Tree Relocations and Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board Upland Canopy Grant Amendments. Staff report.
Mayor members of the council, the staff received a request from the Urban Forestry Committee to forward five motion, uh, four. Five motions to the city council. Uh, and they are outlined in the staff report that all of you have. Uh, one of them deals with. Uh, relocation of the, I'll just briefly mention each. Uh, one of them involves relocation of the trees from the gateway site. The staff requested advice from the Urban Forestry Committee on where to relocate, to where the trees might be relocated. Uh, we received a really good response, pretty detailed as to where those trees could go. Staff, uh, you know, intends to implement that recommendation that we receive from them to the greatest extent possible. Uh, there are a couple of concerns that we have about locations that may be in conflict with other projects. So we'd like to, uh, work through that, perhaps meet with the committee and proceed with, uh. Basically proceed with the plan that is included in their recommendation. Motion two. Is, um. Related to that, it, uh. Oh, oh, excuse me. Motion one was to prepare a tree protection plan. Uh, for the the trees at the gateway and we plan to do that. That's a, that would be a part of the relocation. Effort. As the trailers depart, we would make sure that the trees are protected. Uh, and and motion two deals with the relocation, as I just mentioned. Uh, motion three. Was, uh, to outreach to Highway ninety nine property owners. To, uh, engage them in the OWEB. Um, project to get consent from them for. Uh, placing trees on their private property and also to. Advise, I guess advise the staff on the appropriate species that might be located. In connection with those plantings. Uh, the staff is already in conversation with ODOT about planting trees on the right of way and in the. In the center medians, uh, part of this motion, as I understand it, would be to expand the area in the median. Uh, to accommodate additional trees. So we've got, we've had some meetings with ODOT. We we need to schedule some additional ones there. You know, Highway ninety nine is a state highway. Uh, we are a permittee on the state highway. So we would need to, uh, work with them and their engineers to analyze the, uh, any physical changes to the highway. That might accommodate additional trees. Uh, another issue that we need to consider when we're working on this. Uh, is that, uh, you know, we recently trimmed two trees on private property. Uh, in the city. Those trees were installed by the city on private property with an agreement to maintain them. Uh, the cost of trimming those trees is over a thousand dollars. So we need to be careful when we're talking and doing these agreements with. Property owners to locate a city tree on their property as to who will be responsible for the maintenance of that tree. Just one come initial comment on it. Then, uh. I think a motion four is related to that with respect to the medians. Uh, motion five proposes some additional. Trees along the Bear Creek Greenway south of Lynn Newbury Park. The staff would like to meet with OWEB in the scope out where that would be. There's an indication on the, in the comments from the committee that some of this may be outside the city limits. Uh, if we're going to be providing. Water for those trees, uh, we need to confer with. The Medford Water Commission, uh, because our current agreement with them. Does not provide for. Utilization of Medford Water Commission water. Outside the city limits. So all of these, I think, are great ideas. The staff needs a little more time to. To review them and come back to the council with specific recommendations. That is why we have recommended. That the council, uh, direct staff to review the motions from the Talent Urban Forestry Committee. And report to back to the council with any needed action items at the council meeting of November twentieth.
Are there any comments or questions? Councilor Colay?
Yeah, I just have a few things to add and I'll try to keep them, uh. Per motion as we go, um. Yeah, I appreciate the synthesis and comments from the staff on this, Gary. That's very helpful and, um, looking through them all on short notice. Um, I think I'm okay with moving them to the next meeting. Um, I think there's a bit of urgency on from the committee on both counts, um, when it comes to the gateway trees. I understand there was concern when the trailers were moved in that it was really hard to get them in. So if trailers are already physically moving out before the trees are moved. That could present some potential for damage, especially if it's being done by people who aren't. You know, there for the purpose of making sure that the trees are being taken care of. Um, so that's kind of where the sense of urgency comes on that one. On the second motion about tree, um. Oh, yeah, the first one was tree protections. I was talking about tree relocation. So on tree protection, um, that's less relevant for the trees that are going to be moved and removed from the gateway site. But more relevant to the trees that are going to remain there. There's some explanatory notes in this, but just to make sure it's clear, um, this is like the fencing that you see at construction sites around established trees. Um, so to our understanding, and again, we're going to go through what's whatever the plans are going to be for the gateway. Project, but, um, the trees around the perimeter were intended to stay and be street trees in the future. Those basically before any construction activities or equipment, or even like the removal of the cedar fence. Or whatever's going to happen, happens, those trees need to have a clear protection plan so that they're not, um, harmed by any activities, ones that are going to stay. And then along the lines of, um. The outreach to property owners, I think that's pretty, um, self-explanatory. And I do agree about having clear agreements. I think it's in the OWEB grant, but making sure that like. They understand those are their trees and I know the OWEB grant provides three years of care and maintenance from the contractor, but once that is done, they are not the city's trees if they're not on city property. A little clarification thing on the medians. So at least from my understanding, um, the Urban Forestry Committee is not proposing expanding the. Width of the median themselves, but just expanding the existing planting area in the existing medians that have planter holes in them. Um, they're just not very big and there's kind of extra concrete around them. So obviously ODOT would be the one to probably do that and it'd have to be run by them, but, um, we're not proposing making the medians themselves. Larger in the road footprint, but just expanding the planter holes. And then, yeah, around Lynn Newbury Park. I think to my memory, there was some trees left that we didn't plant when we did the initial planting there because Rogue. River Watershed Council was doing their project and we're potentially going to drive through that area. So I know there's some amount of trees remaining from the existing plan that we presented and got approved that can go in there. Um, and then I think the suggestion was also to maybe add some trees on top of that since there's more trees to be utilized before the end of this planting season on the grant. So. That's what I have.
Any questions? I just have one. Um, so it sounds to me like, um, you know, one of the, I mean, we definitely have a commitment. On some level to make sure that the staff has a chance to vet, um, these recommendations and 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 make staff recommendations of their own. On the urgent and either of you, for either of you, on the, uh, either of you being either you, Gary, or you, uh, Councilor Colay or both of you. On the urgent matter of moving the gateway trees, is it determined that we can't get the trailers out without moving the trees? Do we know that?
No, I don't know that.
Okay.
Have they been moved yet or they've just been approved to be moved?
The trailers have been approved to be moved. But I I don't know the answer to that question.
Yeah, I just, uh, I just, if there was, if there was a reason to to separate that. That motion out. Uh, for the purpose of. Of looking at the recommended motion from staff.
Yeah, the the story that I know from previous staff and, um, the contractor who was putting the plantings in on the site was. That the contractor was putting plantings in on the site. They were still there the day when the trailers were being moved in by whoever they came from, some contractor that was transferring trailers. That contractor couldn't get them into the sites and so they had to use specialized equipment that the landscape contractor happened to just have there because they were there that day to. Very carefully or maneuver the trailers into their sites. I think they did damage some plants, but since the landscape contractor was there, they fixed it that day. So. Uh, we just want to make sure that that goes smoothly.
So if we, uh, if we didn't separate that motion out and and act differently on it, uh, and we kept them all together, would we, would the city still be able to just take a quick look out there and see? And would you be able to determine before November twentieth whether or not?
Sure.
Uh, we can just move around the trees and if not, bring a recommendation back to us for November twenty. So if we have that understanding and we moved, we made the motion as recommended. That that understanding could be had.
You know, it, you know, it's a pro, it's a project in progress and it was our intent. All along to make sure that the trees are.
Yeah. But I mean, I I have no doubt about any of that, but what I don't, I want, I don't want to, I don't want to hinder the ability, uh, for staff to do the vetting that they need to do at the same time. If it is actually urgent because things are getting moved out. There is, it sounds to me like there is the potential to get together. There is, it sounds to me like there is the potential to get together out there. Prior to November twentieth and just determine whether or not that's necessary or not, right? Even if we make the motion the way it is.
Yeah, whether or not you make the motion, the same thing will happen.
Yeah, okay.
We'll, we'll be look, looking at each tree location to determine if there's a, an issue with moving the trailer out.
Yes, but we don't necessarily have to wait till November twentieth if trailers are going out now. Okay, very good. Anybody else have any other questions? Counselors Byers?
It's two parter. One, if you're taking trees out of the ground, don't you also have to have somewhere to put them in the ground? And so if we're pulling that motion out, don't we also need to pair something with it that like. Affords for somewhere for those trees to go. And two, do all the have, do all the trees have to be removed at the same time? Because it's sounding like we're working with like kind of finding the places to put them. So would it be easier to find a place to put some of them? So. Trailers of folks are ready to leave now can leave, but the other ones can stay in the ground a little bit longer until we figure it out where to put them.
I'm happy to speak to that, but you can add on, Gary, but I think.
I'm not, I, I, I can't respond to the question.
Yeah, I want to say for the record, I, I wasn't recommending that we pull it out. Just. I wasn't making that suggestion. I was asking a question to that end, but that's not what I was.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm just saying like, if we do pull it out, we have this other thing to think about.
I understand what you're trying to think through though, and I think. The Urban Forestry Committee's intent with having a. Kind of centralized location around this complex that we're sitting in right now. Would make it very easy for a contractor to do all of that work in a short amount of time and not have to go to a bunch of different sites. They'd be able to retrieve them all at once. So it would keep the cost low for the city. It would make it easy to schedule the contractor. Just make it easier, but yes, they do need a place to go as soon as they come out of the ground.
Right.
Yeah.
Just for the clarification, the only thing that I was, that I want to speak to. Is those trees that you consider urgent, because otherwise everything, everything else would be, you know.
Yeah.
Directed to the staff to vet, prefer to vet. And so I just want to make sure that when I was asking the question, if we vote for all of this to go off on November twentieth, the way you've recommended it. You guys could talk about a tree or two.
Yeah.
Whatever. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think that makes total sense.
I didn't mean, I don't, I don't want to give the impression that I meant all of, that all of those trees, yeah. So thank you for bringing that up because that's, that's not, definitely not what I meant. All right. Any further questions? So I'll entertain a motion. Counsel Colay?
I move to direct city staff to review the motions from the Talent Urban Forestry Committee and report back to the city council with any needed action items. At the city council meeting of November twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second, we have a motion and a second to. Direct staff to review the motions from the Talent Urban Forestry Committee. And report back to the city council with any needed action items at the city council meeting of November twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I feel a little remiss, Gary, in that I didn't pass. If, I'm sure you would make a recommendation for that motion without checking in, that we should probably check in with you about your staff capacity. And just. Yeah.
We've, we've had. Since the motion was brought to us last week, we have had no staff at the council to look at this. So.
If you, if for some reason you were not able to get this done by November twentieth, you'd be bringing us.
I, I think we can.
Based on the staff.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for that. Item eight point five is a resolution adopting federal procurement requirements by reference. Staff report?
So Tessa, are you?
I'm here.
She's here. So I will just briefly. Before Tessa comes on. This relates to the pier project. And sort of the continuing. Program we have of receiving requests through OHCS for. As they're evaluating our capacity to manage the project. So one of the, this, this item came up rather late in the game from them. And Tessa's done a great job putting it together to meet their. Standards.
Right. Thank you and good evening. In front of you is Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one oh two dash R. Adopting federal grant regulations as provided in two CFR part two hundred. Uniform administrative requirements, cost principles and audit requirements for federal, federal awards. Uniform guidance, including procurement standards. The City of Talent has applied for and is expected to receive federal grants in the form of community development block grant funds. In the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. It is a requirement that the city adopt two CFR part two hundred to receive such funding. Staff recommends adoption of Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one oh two dash R.
I have a question for you. I think the last time we did this was. January, February of twenty nineteen. And it seems to me that Sandy Speller, and. The law, the law firm we were with. Brought us these changes somewhere in the beginning of twenty twenty, maybe twenty nineteen? I think it's twenty twenty. I'll look at the record and see if I can find it because I remember the process. You haven't seen it?
No.
Okay. I remember the attorney saying at that time that this should be done periodically. And I understood from that conversation that we would have a schedule of looking at this. Does, does that make sense for us to do that? And if so. Would you be able to, like, I, I, I mean, I don't think we need the answer tonight about what the schedule would look like or anything like that. But, but it was really clear from the attorney's report that this happens. Very regularly. Like these updates from the, from the state.
It's actually the federal government.
Yeah, yes, from the feds. Gosh, was it the feds that we were aligned with last time or was it the state?
I didn't see any resolution that addressed this. I couldn't find anything. So. And also, when I was looking to write the, the staff report and the resolution. I couldn't find any local cities that actually. Referred to this to CFR part two hundred.
Yeah, it might be, actually, it might have been the state regulation. I, I'm pretty sure it was that, but. In either case, the question remains the same. Is that I recall that our attorney's office said that this should be reviewed periodically and. And I don't think we ever got on a schedule to do that. So in addition to that, can we have that looked at? And if there's a schedule, get on the same, yeah, set up a schedule of reviewing the and updating our procurement rules. On the schedule.
Okay, how, how we're going to be looking at this is in the next couple of weeks, you're going to be receiving our financial management policy. And we're going to be including this in our financial management policy, and that's something that you as a council should be reviewing on an annual basis. Also, the procurement rules that you've adopted will also be referred to in that policy as well. And those procurement rules probably should be on the annual basis, would you say, Dave?
Yes.
Yes. So it, it will be in front of you annually.
Finally, okay. Thank you. Any further discussions? I mean, any further questions?
Yeah, so it, it sounds just, just glancing through this, it sounds like it's more than just procurement. I'm wondering if, I'm wondering whatever, what other effects this will have on the way we do finances as a city. For example, we're still on cash basis, right? And I just glanced through here and I see that you can still do cash basis versus full basis. But my question to Tessa is, is. How is this going to change our, the way we do budgets, the way the city does finances that we should be aware of?
I don't see where it would affect how we do budgets or finances at this point in time. We will be moving to a modified accrual basis of accounting. Once staff has the opportunity to do that really heavy lift. So that's, that's, that's on the, the horizon. And with, like I said, with the financial management policy that you'll be seeing in the next two weeks, that's also a requirement. For the peer funding that we were planning on receiving in the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. It was something that has been backburnered on my desk for, since I came on board here. And it just went right to the, the front burner as soon as we discovered that this needed to be done ASAP. So.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Yes, so seeing your opinion, this is taking us in the direction we wanted to go anyway.
Hundred percent.
Good direction. Great.
Yeah, we're going in the right direction. Thank you.
I would say, I would say that it's a little unusual. Maybe a lot unusual. Typically, federal grant agencies require that you have a procurement process. And that you adhere to it in connection with the funding that's being provided. This is the first time I've seen a federal agency require that we. Adopt the federal procurement process. I mean, we've got grant agreements with FEMA. Many other entities, none of them have required this. They're perfectly fine with us agreeing to. Comply with our, our own policies and practices, but. So this is the first time I've seen this. I also went on the internet asking other cities. About this and found one, small cities. It's, it's, I think, related to the fact that OHCS has retained a consultant. To manage this project for them and their attention to detail.
Or that overbearing micromanaging way. Sorry.
It's been pretty aggressive.
I am. I will say that when we did it previously, and I, I'm certain of it. We, it was not in response to another, another grant. It was, it was advice from, it was coming from advice from our, from our attorney's office. But I, I'm going to find that record and I'll, I'll get it to you. All right. So. Are you recommending that we? Okay, I will entertain, first of all, for the questions, I'll entertain a motion. Counsel Colay?
I move to approve Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash one oh two dash R. Adopting federal grant regulations as provided in two CFR part two hundred. Uniform administrative requirements, cost principles and audit requirements for federal awards. Uniform guidance, including procurement standards.
Second, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash one zero two dash R. Adopting federal grant regulations provided in two CFR part two hundred. Uniform administrative requirements, cost principles and audit requirements for federal awards. Uniform guidance, including procurement standards. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Colay?
Yes.
Counselor Pernimora?
Yeah.
Counselor Greider? Counselor Prestizo?
Yes.
Counselor Byers?
Yes.
And Counselor Paramiller?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is nine, thank you, Tessa. Nine point one, review of look ahead. Staff?
I have a question there.
Does everybody have one?
Have we been skipping committee and commission reports on the agenda? I haven't seen it on the agenda and. I'm being.
I think it's the second meeting.
Second meeting, okay.
Yeah, I, I got all up in that conversation and found myself in, in.
Okay.
A lot of hot water.
I mean, I did a lot of speaking about the committee that I.
Yeah, and then from the committee, so it worked up. I'm going to send it to you.
Okay. I'll take it.
Staff, have a word?
Well, you have the look ahead. There'll be some additional items coming into this from the. Flood plane work that we're doing. Get that on the agenda for the council to take action on as quickly as they can. After the public meeting. And you've got some. Work to do towards the end of the year on December eighteenth, looking at adoption of the Mass Timber Code Amendment. And awarding the meter. Project. Well, we also need to loop in here the award of the skateboard park. Rehabilitation project. So. That December thirty-first deadline for a number of these items is closing in fast and. Some of this is driven by. When the funding approvals were made, for example, the skate park. Funding approval just came in. We haven't signed a grant agreement yet. So we can't charge any expenses against it. Meanwhile, the December thirty-first date or obligation of the ARPA funds is creeping our way, so. We've got some. A lot of work to pack in here for the next month and a half.
Ouch, sorry. That, that Don ARPA funding.
It is what it is.
Yeah. I saw a, a lot of organizations that got ARPA funding facing the same, or by train and. I wouldn't say a lot, I'd say a few. Any questions about helping her? Counselor Pernimora?
Yeah, I'm looking at the NFI pathway selection on November twentieth. My remembering there was going to be an RV pod meeting or something where they explained it all ahead of this. Is there something I can tune into, to?
Yeah, we talked about, I think they're coming up with the next couple of days.
Tomorrow.
So you can go on to their website?
Yeah.
On the RV pod website and find the billings. Okay, and then also we're getting a presentation from Rowan.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so. At, at that meeting or prior to that?
That meeting.
Okay.
Well, she'll be doing the staff report for the. For the planning commission and also the council.
She'll be doing the planning mission prior to that? Okay, great. Are we taking a recommendation from the planning commission on this?
It, it's going there first.
Okay, all right. Any other questions or comments? All right, any, anybody have anything else on other, anything else on other? And you know, there are no written communications, so we are adjourning this meeting at seven forty-eight. Form for the, the December meeting? Yeah. Anybody going out of town for December?